Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 6, 2016. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:30. I would ask that you all rise and I'm going to invite Andrew Hilgendorf from Troop 78 York High School. He's one of our local Boy Scouts. I'm going to ask Andrew to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Andrew, the floor is yours.
Can we offer him a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andrew. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the roll.
Leader.
Here.
Done.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Holmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy. Absent.
Yes.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Anquist. Second, absent. Wagner.
Absent.
Mulliner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
Eleven present, three absent. We have a quorum, we are in session. On to Agenda Item 2, Presentations. I'm going to head down to the lectern over there. I'm going to invite Brian Berghager and Michael Cicero and Kathy Seigert to meet me down there. Okay, I'll start with the intro. Brian, you're going to stay back there. No, you can come on. Okay, as many of you know, we hold an annual poster contest, a Ruth Strand poster contest. We hold it every year. It's a contest, it's in honor of Ruth Strand who was a librarian at the Elmhurst Public Library for almost 30 years, from 1939 to the late 60s. And at a bequest from Ms. Strand, she gave funds to support this annual project. It's sponsored by our Elmhurst Heritage Foundation, the private nonprofit foundation that supports our Elmhurst History Museum through fundraising and advocacy. This contest every year invites second graders of all elementary schools in Elmhurst to submit an original drawing that depicts a scene from Elmhurst history and is a way to encourage people to have interest in Elmhurst history. And I'll be honest, in reviewing the posters, there's facts in there that I didn't know. So it's always good, you can always learn something. We received entries from over 10 elementary schools this year. The top three winners were selected along with honorable mention winner from each school. The awards were presented on May 25th with many of the winners accompanying the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation to entry in last week's Memorial Day Parade. Without any further ado, I'm going to hand over the microphone to Michael Cicero. He's the president of Elmhurst Heritage Foundation, and Kathy Seigert, who's one of the board members. Thank you.
Mike? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Grabowski and members of City Council. Pleased to be here tonight, behalf of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. As Mayor Morley said, we're a not-for-profit 501(c)(3). We support the mission of the museum. We do that through fundraising, through our education efforts, and through advocacy. The Ruth Strand poster contest is one of those educational programs that we put on on a yearly basis to honor Ruth Strand, as Mayor Morley said, a longtime librarian, children's librarian at the Elmhurst Public Library. And she believed that Elmhurst history was important, that certainly reading is important, and one of her bequests in her will at the time was to give us money to the Heritage Foundation to put on an annual event to honor Elmhurst, its history and children, and to encourage our children to participate in the program and produce some product that would help them learn about Elmhurst history, which is generally not taught as much in our local schools as we'd like it to be. So we are very pleased to have the participants and winners here tonight to honor them. They did a fabulous job, and they have all had to research Elmhurst history to come up with their posters and then prepare the posters. So we should all be very proud of them, and on behalf of the Heritage Foundation, we're pleased to have this opportunity to present them to you for recognition tonight. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Seigert, and I'm the chair of the Ruth Strand poster contest. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. And if you haven't yet seen the wonderful article in the Elmhurst Independent on the June 2nd issue, it's all about the winners and the contest. Without further ado, I would like to call up individually the winners. I will have their names. I'll tell you what school they go to and what their poster topic was. So, we have quite a few of our winners here today, and in no particular order, I'm going to bring up honorable mention winners. And let's start with Samantha Shaner. Samantha, come on up. Samantha is from Emerson School, and she was a second grader when she did this. And her topic was the Elmhurst Airport. Congratulations. Another honorable mention and another Samantha is Samantha Tomlinson. Samantha is now a third grader at Lincoln School, and her topic was the Greenhouse in Wilder Park, also known as the Conservatory. Congratulations. Next, we have an honorable mention, Riker Hargus. Riker is from Hawthorne School, and he did both the old Hawthorne School and the new Hawthorne School for his topic. Margaret Paz. Margaret is now a third grader at Edison School, and her topic was the Gloss Mausoleum. And you know what a mausoleum is? Will Van Meere, another one of our honorable mention winners, from Field School, and he did the Churchville Schoolhouse. Congratulations. Always nice to see one of the students do the Churchville Schoolhouse because many of the children in Elmhurst go there on field trips, and the Heritage Foundation pays for the buses for those field trips, so it's not a cost to the school district. Next, we have the third place winner, Delilah Caimans. Delilah goes to Conrad Fisher School, also known just as Fisher, and she did Old Main at Elmhurst College. Congratulations. And we do have our first place winner here tonight, and that's Beatrice Pollack. Beatrice did Hawthorne School, no, she's from Hawthorne School, now a third grader, and she did an unusual topic, the Keebler Elf. Now, even though the Keebler Company is no longer here, she has a neighbor that used to work for the Keebler Company, so she's got that personal connection to history in Elmhurst. Congratulations to all of you.
Guys, we're going to come up here, we're going to do a big picture, okay?
Follow the mayor.
All right. We should have turned around.
Yeah. That's a good one.
It's very artistic.
It's a good one.
Whatever.
Why should the kids suffer? Why should the kids suffer? You'd be a little mellow with your vacation. Have you gone? Did you have a good vacation? Isn't it awesome?
Which one?
Washington, D.C.
Did you go to the embalming?
Mondeliz or something.
Where did you stay in?
Manhattan.
Manhattan.
Yeah.
Do you remember seeing me at your house?
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you have fun?
Go.
Excellent.
Hey, congratulations.
We meet again.
Congratulations.
Watch your step.
I said it.
Congratulations.
Watch your step.
Now everybody's worried.
Congratulations, watch your step.
Parents and winners, you certainly don't have to stay, you're welcome to, we have to stay. I think Elmhurst, the future of Elmhurst is in great hands, it's good to see. And anybody who didn't get a chance, three of the poster winners are outside in Easle, so take a look when you head on out. Okay, on with Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they wish to submit to Clerk Spencer? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Crummer, you have something to submit? Please provide it to Clerk Spencer, she'll make sure it gets distributed. Okay, anyone else for written communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. This is an opportunity, this is a part of the meeting where it's an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that out of respect for the work we have to get here done this evening, and out of respect for other folks who may want to speak, that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. When you, when the clerk calls your name, please make your way to the microphone over here, state your name for the record as we are recording, and addresses are optional. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. Ed Suzak. Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Ed Suzak. I'm Elmhurst Fireman. I've been here for 18 and a half years. I'm also on the Executive Board for the Elmhurst Professional Firefighters Association, Local 3541. Prior to getting hired here in Elmhurst Fire Department, I worked for industrial, as an industrial firefighter, paramedic, and loss prevention and safety department for a large truck manufacturing company. When I came to Elmhurst, I took a modest pay decrease, not to mention I was leaving employer, that I was part of a defined pension plan. My point being, I left a good job with good pay and benefits for the opportunity, worked for a well-respected fire department in a great city, so it's not always about the money. When I was hired here at the Elmhurst Fire Department, I held Illinois Emergency Medical Technician Paramedic License. Approximately one year after being hired, I downgraded my license to Emergency Medical Technician Basic. I did this because it was hard to maintain my license, and more importantly, I did not feel I could properly maintain my medic skills, IVs, telemetry interpretations, drug calculations, and so on and so forth. At that time, the Fire Department Administration did not even let us attend the monthly medic continuing education while we were on shift. The Fire Department Administration did not seem to encourage the firefighters to keep their EMTP status, conversely, they seemed to discourage it. Actually, I remember questioning one of my supervisors about this, and he responded, "Why should they let you go to medic CE? It's not part of your job description." Since that time, I've been on numerous calls that being a paramedic would be beneficial to the improved outcome on those calls. I know the city manager and some of the city council members may counter that statement by saying you don't know whether having advanced life support equipment and/or extra set of hands would have made a difference on a particular call. In the past year alone, we've had several calls that did not have a positive outcome. I further believe that in at least one of those situations, the city's operational change was with regard for the safety of the citizens of Elmhurst. More recently, there have been at least two calls at the Elmhurst Fire Department paramedics, firefighter paramedics, were first on the scene and their hands were tied because they did not have ALS fire, ALS equipment, and/or the medical authority to render advanced life support patient care. Additionally, the city manager's refusal to replace the three retired firefighters is wrong and is going to start catching up with the people that are either forced to take the overtime, or in some cases, even voluntarily take the overtime. I know we are like insurance policy, you only need us when something bad happens. Please make sure that we can be there when the citizens of Elmhurst need us most. City Manager Grabowski, Mayor Morley, and entire City Council, please reconsider what appears to be anti-ALS and anti-fireman campaign. Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. May was a bad one for the residents of Elmhurst. $25 million bond issue. Maybe for a good cause. Been paid by sales tax. Looks like the council members have a new view on it. Looks like it's going to be an assessment, huh? Yes, indeed. Special meeting of the council, TIF 5. Not all the council members are there, but enough to hold a meeting. $2.4 million is needed, general obligation bonds, maybe. See, it's on the agenda again here. Got to get all the boys together to see how you can pay for this. Yeah, very nice. Yes, indeedy. Special, last meeting, May 16th. Haven't seen it on TV at all. Council suspends rules, suspends Robert's Rules of Order. Somebody forgot to talk to DuPage County to get on their property. Forgot to talk to DuPage County. Isn't that just amazing? Still get to rush it through, right? Sure you do. As far as the alderman had said, we've been waiting a long time for water retention. People of this city have been waiting over 100 years. Two weeks going through the committees and everything wouldn't have hurt anything. Yes, indeed. Han, pick up the paper. Architect forgets to put sprinklers in the city parking area, wants the city to pay for it because somebody said he didn't have to do it. Well, architect forgot to tell the city there were some columns in the way and they lost parking spaces. What were those worth? They didn't pay for a building permit. Tru and money for removal of contaminated soil. What does the guy want? We're also stuck with cleaning out that retention basin you put in. Maybe the guy should get a little less. Tonight, new metro station. A building that's used about 1% out of the day, we need a new metro station. We ain't got money to pay for water retention, but we want a new metro station.
Mr. Pagash, could you wrap your comments up?
Surely. Number one is, you still got to worry about that ant house on First and Addison there, you ain't got the money for that either. By the time you guys are done, I'll be going to the food banks.
Hello, Paula Peza. When I looked at this evening's agenda, one word in particular came to my mind, priorities. On the same agenda, on one hand, we're jumping through hoops, racing to form a TIF 5 in order to find ways to get 6-plus million dollars to yet another car dealer, plus include certain properties on Walnut Street that could potentially make the owners of those properties millions of dollars. Yet, on the same agenda, we have a referral to discuss the future of our city's emergency services. As a former alderman, I was honored to serve four years on the Public Affairs and Safety Committee because I believe the health, safety, and welfare of lives is and always should be the number one priority of any city. It will be telltale to see what these committee discussions involve. My guess is they will lead to finding ways to cheap out, make cuts, maybe even outsource our fire department. As a human being who values lives and has the utmost respect for the men and women who dedicate their lives to being first responders, and as a taxpayer, this is the one and only place I am not willing to make cuts or cheap out. When someone dials 911, they deserve only the best of the best response. We have the best of the best in Elmhurst. In case you didn't notice, some of them just ran out of here, probably to help save a life. If my tax dollars must go to fund pensions, funding those of our first responses, responders should come first and foremost. If this is what this referral is about, Mr. Grabowski, I know you will someday be entitled to a very nice pension. When someone dials 911, it is not you who is showing up to risk your life to enter a burning building, dive into a creek to save someone from drowning, or perform lifesaving measures, because that is not your job. However, it is your job to ensure the utmost safety and safety measures are provided for the citizens of this town. I say shame on any city manager, mayor of a town, especially one born and raised here, or any elected official who puts incentives and handouts before the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. I hope the committee discussion shows that our elected officials truly do have their priorities in order. Thank you.
Tamara Brenner, there are all kinds of really interesting things on tonight's agenda that deserve comment. Maybe you guys will get a chance to comment on them because there's not enough time for me to comment on most of them, but I'm just going to point out, we're going to be giving another $200,000 approximately to the Han Street developer because they neglected to account for sprinkler system in the garage. That's supposed to protect the residences above the garage, city's going to pay for that, great. TIF 5, which was supposedly only giving ourselves an option last time I was here, to become, to come into being, is basically being rushed through again, so we've got all the dates for the joint review board and the public hearing, which is totally a sham. You're not going to be listening to the public when the public hearing comes for TIF 5. TIF 5 will become a reality, there's no question about it at this point. $6 million to car dealerships, who knows how much to other private entities that are included there. TIF 2 should be ending, this area should be not TIFed anymore, but here we go again. $25 million general obligation bonds that include the levy and collection of a direct annual tax, that's the property tax as far as I understand it. Maybe you can explain to me why that's not the case if that isn't the case, or how much it's going to cost me when that is the case. Multiple suspensions of the rules to put through different awards because somehow the process of government is now too slow, we have to rush through all kinds of projects. I see that in Section 10. But the thing that really has me concerned enough to actually show up here again tonight is the referral number 6.8 regarding city-provided emergency services. I read the referral, and it gives me the impression that we are already having a conclusion within the city, within the city, you guys already probably have a conclusion in mind where you want this little investigation to take you. That's the appearance this has. It already says that we're being provided high-quality service, et cetera. Well, I'm getting the message from some of the fire people that there are some problems with the provision of services here, mostly as a result of scrimping by outsourcing paramedics. I'm really disheartened to hear that qualified people actually downgraded their licensure because it wasn't part of their job description, and the city, instead of encouraging to have super-good performing people in here, is dumbing them down because they don't want to pay in-house to have quality services. Why are we scrimping on public safety, even if I never have to use their services in town? I hope my house never catches fire, and I hope I never need to call for a medical emergency. I am happy to pay for their pensions. I want to have good quality people, I want them to be in-house. Outsourcing public safety services doesn't make any sense if your priority is public health and safety of the people that you're supposed to be serving. If you've got other priorities, such as financial ones to various friends and who-knows-who-else, then you're going to make decisions that include scrimping on public safety. I think it's wrong, and I am going to be interested to see how this goes down with this, with this look at these services, cutting down and even potentially the thought that you're, that there might be a thought of outsourcing fire services to, that would be an absolute travesty on the part of the city, and I certainly hope that's not what's intended here. Thanks.
That's all who signed in, Ms.
Okay, that's it for public forum for folks who signed in this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Wait a second, I got to make sure how many people we got. Two? Anybody else? All right, we'll start with the man in the back in the time. Mr. Crummer, you'll go after him. Sir, please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ben Silver, and I'm a community lawyer with Citizen Advocacy Center. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, community-based legal organization with over 20 years' experience promoting democracy and participation in local government. We promote transparency, openness, and accountability in government so that the public may effectively participate in the government decision-making process. I'm speaking tonight to deliver a brief statement on behalf of Citizen Advocacy Center regarding a concerning procedural irregularity that occurred during the city council's last regular meeting on May 16th. The next phase of the stormwater management project requires approval of a location agreement with DuPage County. Unfortunately, DuPage County did not present that agreement to Elmhurst until four days before the May 16th meeting. An ordinance to approve a temporary location agreement with DuPage County appeared on the agenda for that meeting. This ordinance never went through committee, and it appeared for the, the agenda item was the first, the public's first notice of the ordinance. The council was asked to accept the city manager's report in lieu of a committee report. Over the objections of Aldermen Bram and Mulliner, the city council accepted the city manager's report and our recommendation. Over the objections of Alderman Bram and Mulliner, the city council suspended the rules to vote on the ordinance. The city, the Citizen Advocacy Center has made its home in Elmhurst. The Citizen Advocacy Center has made its home in Elmhurst for 23 years. We do not recall ever seeing the normal rules of procedure disregarded in this fashion. These rules are intended to keep the public informed of this body's work. As far as we can tell, the city council has not passed a similar ordinance in this manner in over two decades. I understand that the nature of the stormwater problem and the wastefulness of a delay in approving the agreement necessitated a rapid solution. This is reflected in the city council's unanimous passage of the ordinance following the procedural objections. However, the popular substance of a particular question should not trump the procedural rules put in place to protect the public and the alderman's ability to consider and debate matters of public concern. Alderman Bram suggested that the city could have called an emergency meeting of the Committee on Public Works prior to the regularly scheduled council meeting. While that would not have provided the public the full, normal timeframe to review the ordinance, it would have significantly increased the period of public notice before a final vote, improved the public's ability to review the ordinance, and cut closer to the normal rules of order. Procedural rules protect the public's ability to participate in the democratic process. We hope that the city council takes this to heart and follows regular procedure in the future. Thank you.
Michael Crumory, 570 West Crockett. I only have time to read one page of my talking points, but the paperwork I handed in at the public documentation, if people wanna get the two pages, we can do a FOIA. The first public stormwater communication meeting was held 11 months ago on July 9, 2015. Unfortunately, the progress remains painfully slow. Let me emphasize, all Elmhurst residents are affected by flooding. Even if your basement stays dry, when 10% of your fellow Elmhurst residents flood, it directly affects the value of your home and the reputation of Elmhurst. Flooding is an Elmhurst issue that requires cooperation from all to resolve. I would encourage everyone on the city council and all Elmhurst residents to watch the videos from the last two stormwater communication meetings held on Thursday, April 28, and Wednesday, May 25, to listen to the dialogue and key comments provided by District 205 Representative John McDonough and Board of Education President Shannon Ebner. Now on to my two key talking points. When someone buys, sells a home in Elmhurst, the address and the sale price is listed in the local newspaper. This is public information. Websites allow entry of an address, and it provides back the real estate taxes for the home in Elmhurst. Again, public information. So how is it possible that Board of Education President Shannon Ebner, an elected official, can say the following comments at the last stormwater meeting at the 3950-minute mark? Quote, "This is not a place to negotiate." Quote, "The negotiation should happen with the lawyers," and Dave Moyer and Jim, meaning city manager Jim Grabowski. Quote, "You don't negotiate in public." Well, the last time I checked, my real estate taxes are directly paying for these public services. Point number two, back in October 2015, Superintendent David Moyer was assigned to handle the discussions concerning flood mitigation with the city, i.e. to interact with city manager Grabowski. Since October 2015, there have been seven stormwater communication meetings. How many meetings has Superintendent David Moyer attended? Zero. He has not participated in a single stormwater communication meeting. I especially like this shovel that I brought to unload red mulch from the back of my pickup truck to place into the landscaping around my home. The shovel was previously owned by my grandfather. My grandfather lived on a farm. Do I need to bring this shovel and wear my rubber boots to the next stormwater communication meeting to again hear the District 205 continued delays?
Okay, anyone else who did not have an opportunity to sign in? Seeing none, that concludes our Agenda Item 4, Public Forum portion of the meeting. Onto announcements. I have one quick announcement before I ask for any announcements from the dais. I'm happy to announce that the Conservation Foundation recently awarded the City of Elmhurst Wastewater Treatment Plant Division with the Clean Water Award for keeping our local waterways clean and healthy. The facility and system consists of ten sanitary lift stations that pump up to 20 million gallons of wastewater per day and are monitored 24/7 by Elmhurst staff to ensure that water quality meets or exceeds the imposed limits by the IEP-A. We were awarded this honor for our activities in 2015, including activities taking place at the water reclamation plant, such as tours by Elmhurst and Villa Park Boy Scouts, troops, and science classes from York High School. In addition, we completed a Salt Creek Greenway Trail that contained innovative green infrastructure for stormwater. The city continues to promote environmental sustainability, conservation, and conservation through its residential rain barrel program, holiday cooking grease collection, and pumpkin recycling programs throughout the community. We got this nice award here, I shouldn't say we, staff did, for all of their hard work. We have Paul Burris, I'd ask Paul, recognize yourself there. He runs our wastewater treatment plant. And Howard Killian, he's department head. Anyone else I'm missing out there, Jim?
Not tonight, no.
Not tonight? Okay, so I wanna thank everyone, staff for their hard work, and the wastewater treatment folks for this well-deserved award. Congratulations. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Dunn.
Just wanna make an announcement on the first police roll call to occur, and the second ward will be tomorrow night. That is at Third and Ridgeland at 6 o'clock. And again, that's Third and Ridgeland. All are invited to attend. Thanks.
Okay, great. Any other announcements? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple announcements regarding the college. Like to send congratulations to the Elmhurst College class of 2016. On May 28, 675 undergraduates, including the city's own Lauren Wolf and Fire Administration, received undergraduate degrees, and 140 graduate students were awarded degrees at a wonderful outdoor ceremony on that day. Also at the college, the annual June Jazz is set to occur on June 18. We're hoping for good weather this year so it can be outside on the Mall. Grammy Award-winning singer Patty Austin is the guest, and she'll be performing with the Elmhurst College Jazz Band under the direction of Doug Beach. It's a great program, good time to bring out picnic baskets and chairs, and just enjoy a lovely evening on the college mall, listening to some really great music. And finally, the Elmhurst Cycling Classic is six weeks away. Information is available at elmhurstcyclingclassic.com, and we can always use volunteers to help us stage a safe and fun event. Thank you.
What's the date on that?
Oh, that's a good question. July 22. Racing starts at 11:00 a.m. and goes until about 10:00 p.m.
Okay, great. Any other announcements? Seeing no other announcements, we go on to Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda. At this time, is there anybody who wishes to have any item removed or pulled from the consent agenda to vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Bram. Any other items? Any aldermen wishes to have removed? Okay, all right. 6.24, is that it?
He just wanted me to know.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 6.24. Motion by Alderman Dunn, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Spencer.
Leeder.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
Keely. Absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist. Absent. Wagner. Absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion passes. Consent agenda minus Item 6.24 is approved. On to Item 6.24. It's a report out of Finance.
Did you, wait a second. He did wanna say something, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You forgot to.
All right.
We'll do it anyway. Alderman Levin wanted to pull 6.2 executive session. Then at our next executive session, we'll address his concern.
I can amend, I can move to amend it then, since we've already.
Okay, yeah, we've already voted on it, so.
All right.
Onto Agenda Item 6.24. Clerk Spencer, do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Okay. This is a report out of Finance. I'd ask Clerk Spencer to read the recommendation. DPZ. What am I looking at?
It's out of DPZ.
This is for the fire protection proposal for 25.
Mine's mislabeled. You got 6.25.
Yeah, mine's under the old agenda.
All right. Can I borrow yours?
May I borrow?
I should've asked Clerk Spencer if I had the right one. My apologies. Mine was misnumbered in my packet. Okay, Agenda Item 6.24. It is a report out of DPZ. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Development Planning and Zoning Committee that the fire protection proposal from Morningside in the amount not to exceed $192,026.81 be accepted, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary contract documents, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman; Marke Mulliner, Vice Chairman; Michael Honquist.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, your report.
Thank you. Obviously, I think we're probably, this is the Morningside Addison Project 255. When the plans were originally being developed for this parking garage, there was no requirement put in for sprinklers because it was a grade-level, open-air parking garage. That was the advice given, I believe, by our own city Fire Prevention Bureau. So as a result, the sprinklers were not included in that portion. And when I say that portion, I'm referring to the public portion. This is our public garage. When it went time to get the actual approvals, there was advice from the state that despite what the city Fire Prevention Bureau had said, and this is the well-accepted procedure, that because there is residential units located above the property, that sprinklers would in fact be required. So I wouldn't call it an architect error. Came back, the cost is $192,000. The developer pointed out a request that we pay for it because it's our portion, and basically that is what this report does. It's unfortunate it wasn't caught before. If it had, we would be paying $192,000 more. I don't think there was any change based upon the fact that it was added later. So because it's our space, because it's required, the developer's passing on the cost to us, and I ask for your support.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that during the process from start and to almost finish, that there seems to have been some mistakes, or this has been missed, to say it kindly. I do find, however, that this is a public parking lot, and it is our responsibility for the public parking lot. The residential units are the developers, the same developer that has received $10 million plus in incentives, including the land that essentially was given to this developer. I find it kinda humorous that there's been developments all throughout town and how this could be missed in all parties involved. Given the fact that the reason for the sprinklers is to protect the residential units above the parking, I believe it is the responsibility and the accountability should lie solely on the developer in hand. $192,000 might seem a lot to the residents, and it does to me as a person, but what it comes down to is, this is a mistake that I hold the accountability to the developer, the developer once again, who has received 10-plus million dollars in incentives already. To me, it almost looks like that we, as the City of Elmhurst, are looking for ways to provide additional incentives. This is, the developer needs to be accountable. It is not as simple as, "The Elmhurst taxpayers should've paid this from the beginning, and therefore, we're just being passed on today." It's not that cut and dry. The architect, the developer is the one who provided this. Wherever they got their feedback, it is their accountability, their responsibility to pay for it, to protect the residential units above it. It's that simple to me. It's that common sense to me. It's not like this is the first time this developer has been in town, in the City of Elmhurst. They've done Crescent Court. They've done multiple developments here in town. I don't think it's acceptable, I can't support this report, to add an additional close to $200,000 on the taxpayer's back for a development that has seen way more than enough incentives, and I've only quoted the dollars and cents, not the permit fee waves, not all the other things that we have done for this development to move forward. I can't approve an additional close to $200,000. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, if I'm remembering correctly, the redevelopment agreement with this developer includes a provision to recapture, I think, the full amount of our TIF assistance. I'm wondering if there was any discussion at the committee level about modifying that agreement to increase the amount of recapture that we're able to get in the event of some type of capital event. So if down the road the building's sold and the developer has a large upside, that's the purpose of that recapture provision. It would be nice to be able to recapture this amount as well.
Alderman Levin.
To answer Alderman Deuter's question, no. And to address some of the other comments, it wasn't that the building developer made a mistake. The building developer relied upon information provided from the City of Elmhurst. And when we brought in the consultant, the code consultant, and there was a genuine dispute, and it was finally decided that the sprinkler was required, Morningside, maybe they did Crescent Court, that's not an open-air garage. It's a closed garage, so it's a completely different circumstance. It's our property legally, it's our responsibility. We don't have to park anything there, and it won't affect the developer a bit. We can say, "We are not putting in the sprinkler. There will not be a ability to use the garage, and we will save $192,000, and it won't affect the developer at all." It's really disingenuous to call this an incentive. This is part of what the deal was, and it's our property, and if we don't wanna do it, we don't have to. It's not an additional incentive to the developer. It doesn't do anything for the developer. It's for us to use the garage. And I've been involved in enough construction projects, sometimes this happens, and it doesn't necessarily, there have been mistakes where we've shared them, in the Addison garage, where it's not clear. But in this case, when the city says to the developer, "You don't need to do it for your own garage," and that it's later determined that you do, I'm not sure why we would turn to the developer and say, "It's your responsibility, it's your problem." We could open up the whole thing and go all the way back to day one, but this is the way it breaks down, in my opinion, from a contractor point of view. So I don't think it's that unusual. I'll support it.
Any additional comments? Alderman Dunn.
I just wanted to clarify the parking and the whole structure. I believe there are, there's city-owned parking, which we are installing the sprinkler system for. There's also parking for the units above. Are there requirements for those spots to have sprinkler systems also? Were they put in, and we didn't put them in ours? Or are there only, as a result, going to be a sprinkler system for the city parking
City Manager Grabowski, you wanna answer that, or you wanna?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there are sprinklers for the other parking areas, the private parking areas with the residential on top of it.
Okay. Yeah, it's closed in. Okay. Any other comments? Alderman, who hasn't, Alderman Bram, you had your hand up? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll just... I'll just reiterate one point, and that point is, that this is, my understanding is this is to protect the residential units above. I feel that that is the accountability of the developer. And even if we shared responsibility, we're not sharing in cost, like we've done in, in other cases. I think Alderman Deuter had a good point, when it comes to looking at the cost share, I don't remember the technical terms now, but down the road. It wasn't addressed, should it be revisited? I think it should, but I, I still cannot support this.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to go back to my earlier comment, you know, and the way I'm thinking of this, the sprinkler system is a cost of the project, just like the parking spaces are a cost of the project. And if I'm remembering correctly, and someone certainly can correct me, you know, we looked at a number of items that were eligible for city participation, TIF assistance, to fund those components. I think the public parking was one of them, where, you know, we added up the different items that we were prepared to support with TIF dollars. I think the parking spaces were one of them. This, to me, seems to go right along with that, and I would think that this should be added to the amount of opportunity that we have to recapture our TIF assistance, if in fact, that opportunity exists at some point in the future.
We should address that, and, go ahead. City Manager Gabowski wants to chime in.
As, with the RDA that was structured for this, if everyone recalls, there was a cap of $5.9 million that the city would be reimbursed upon sale, or another action, refinance of the project. And that included a number of items of eligible costs that could be reimbursed. And this, we, as we understand it, this would be included in that reimbursable cost, and in fact, the environmental has come in at a little bit less than what we anticipated, $200,000 less. So we think that this would be one of the reimbursable costs under the RDA.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Seeing now, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent, Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist, absent, Wagner, absent, Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Did I miss somebody? Oh, okay, 10 ayes, 1 nays, 3 absents.
10 ayes, 1 nay, motion carries, agenda item 6.4 is, 6.24 is approved, thank you. Onto committee reports. 7.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you
The DPZ
Read the recommendation, thank you.
The DPZ committee agrees with the findings of the Zoning and Planning Commission, and recommends that the city council approve the downtown plan as an amendment to the 2009 City of Elmhurst Comprehensive Plan. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman, Michael Honquist.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, you want to set this up?
Yes. As everyone who's been around for a while knows, we've had the 1992 plan, and we had the 2006 downtown plan. There have been a number of times over the years, recent years, where developments have come in, and one side points to the 1992 plan, another side might point to the 2006 plan. There are inconsistencies between the two plans. And I don't know, I think there was a feeling on the committee, and I know Alderman Mulliner in particular was interested in advancing a new downtown plan, the committee wholeheartedly agreed. In 2014, when we were doing the 2015 budget, we put money in, back into the budget specifically for planning, and this was something that had been lacking for a number of years in view of the recession. So this was our number one priority, and we engaged a consultant, Housel Levine, to do that. And it's gone through a long process, and what we'll hear tonight is a presentation by our consultant, who will sort of bring it from the point at which it was referred from the committee to, an engagement of the consultant to where we got today, and then we can answer any questions.
Okay, before I do that, just a little housekeeping. According to our code, no one can address city council except for a certain select few, city manager, et cetera, without consent of majority members present. So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to allow Mr. Nick Davis to address the council, motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Any discussion? This is a motion to allow Mr. Davis to address council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, Mr. Davis, the floor is yours.
All right, is that on?
Yep.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Gabowski, and the city council, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight some of the key, I guess, the process for the downtown plan, some of the key elements within this plan. So we're not going to go through the entire document, I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to review it, it's 147 pages. We could, but it would take, it would take some time. So what I'd like to do tonight is just run through some of the key, let me make sure my clicker, yeah, some of the key planning processes and steps that we took to get to the plan that you have in front of you today. The first thing was to review the past plans and studies. We reviewed quite a few, all that were relevant to the downtown plan as we were beginning to develop it. One of the, obviously, the key ones was the 2006 downtown plan. But we also looked at the, the 1990 sector plan, you know, the, the north downtown plan of 2000. We looked at the corridor plan that came along 2015 that, that we actually did. But just to review to make sure that the recommendations that were talked about in the past were reconciled, brought together, made consistent, and reflected what, you know, we started hearing from while we were doing our community outreach, but also while we were in the field. So the next step was an existing conditions report. And as part of this plan, we incorporated an evaluation of the existing conditions of the physical characteristics within downtown Elmhurst. We reviewed current regulatory standards, you know, the zoning code as it stands, you know, and as part of this plan, and as part of these recommendations, we did an audit, which I'll talk about kind of here towards the end, about what recommendations we think could be, in the future, formalized and, and require a zoning amendment or zoning updates. We also just included assessments in the plan about the existing land use, like I said, current zoning, transportation, mobility, transit, parking, all of these infrastructure, all of these elements that make up a lot of the key issues that you're trying to address as you're trying to improve the downtown. Outreach was, outreach and stakeholder interviews were a major component of this plan. We had great outreach, I know we've talked about it in several of the meetings, I recognize many of the faces here. You know, we, we kicked this off with the ZMP Commission, where we did a workshop, got really a base understanding of what the issues were, what we wanted to make sure, you know, hitting the ground running, you know, looking at the old plan, what were some of the inconsistencies with maybe the comp plan. And then from there, we held downtown focus groups with business owners, property owners, brokers, I mean, there's a long list there, of people that attended these separate meetings. And it was great, we got a lot of feedback within those, and it allowed us to walk into this downtown community workshop, and, you know, start to hear from everybody in the public. We had over 90 participants come, which is quite a bit for a, a community outreach effort. We took as many comments as we could, and from that, we drafted summaries of every meeting, posted them, received any comments if needed, and those are all incorporated in the appendix at the end of the plan. So those aren't recommendations, those are things that we heard from the public, those aren't our ideas. And then from there, we had an ongoing community outreach through our website. Surveys, MAP, which is an online mapping tool, allows people to specifically say where they want things to change, or, or what some of their key issues are. We had over 750 submitted questionnaires, which again, was a record for our firm. It was incredible, a lot of feedback, and it started to echo a lot of the comments that we were already hearing from the public. So it gave us the foundation we needed to start moving forward on recommendations. From there, we held an outreach with 150 participants coming to the open house, where we presented that draft plan. Again, we were receiving feedback from the community, from, you know, if it's residents, business owners, property owners. They were given the opportunity to see the plan, it is a entirety. We, we brought some boards in where they could point to things. And then we had a public hearing to present the updated draft plan. Sorry, I know this is a lot, but it was just, it was a lot of different outreach methods or opportunities for the public to respond to what we were recommending. And the last meeting was this ZMP Commission, where it's been recommended to the city council for approval. So that was... So from all of that, from the community outreach, the existing conditions report, the reviewing of the past plans, we were able to establish that foundation, the direction that we wanted to use moving forward. And from that came the vision for downtown Elmhurst. And, and all of these things are, are things that we're trying to solve. So this is within that vision, it's a two-page general description of, you know, ultimately, what this downtown needs to be, what everybody wants it to be. So activating storefronts, promoting TOD principles, you know, making sure that your activity generators remain, remain your activity generators, but also that there's others in the future that you want to start to attract into this area. Capitalizing on your regional mobility, or enhancing the streetscape, making, working with the city an easier process, providing more parks and open space, parking and access. These are all things that everybody was telling us they want to see, want to hear, and this is what the root of the recommendations in the plan are driving towards. Again, this is a long list, I won't read them all, but the actions and recommendations are basically the outline of all the recommendations in the plan. So each one of these are subheadings within that section, within that, basically what makes up the meat of the downtown plan. Things we provided were functional land use zones. So instead of saying, this parcel has to be this type of use, we broke it down into, you know, the core, the outer core, institutional, different kinds of zones that allowed for some kind of flexibility with certain parcels or certain areas, but are, each one of them are kind of focused on an intense use or a type of use, or maybe how building forms are sited, what the setbacks might look like. We provide guidelines, we provide recommendations for what those could be. We talk about activating storefronts, that was a key issue that we heard throughout the process, about, you know, what are some of the opportunities, how can we solve these problems? What are the short-term solutions, what are some of the, the long-term solutions? Downtown streets, you know, improving intersections and crosswalks, you know, including things like bump outs. We, we addressed and looked at the one-way versus the two-way configuration, and at this point, you know, we, we recommend that the one-way system stay in place, provide metrics or, or opportunities in the future to review this. Parking options, parking requirements, both on the residential side, but also on the commercial side. We provide some opportunities or alternatives to the current parking configuration. But we also identify how much parking's available as it stands now. So it's really a perception issue, too, so we kind of came at that from a couple of different angles. We talk about streetscape, public art, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for public art in the downtown. City Center already has a program in place, but there's other opportunities that could be done moving forward. So we provide some examples of what that might be, and how you might move forward with that. Design guidelines. So one of the big aspects of the plan, separate from the actions and, and recommendation section, is what these design guidelines should look like in the downtown. So starting with what we talked about as these functional land use zones, we start to provide specific recommendations about, you know, how buildings should be sited, where should they be placed, what's the scale, what's the height, you know, recommended height, what's the architectural style, where should doors and entrances be as part of the structure, windows, roof lines? Very detailed, some of this came from the original 2006 plan, a lot of it was updates, you know, what are some of the new building trends, what are people doing now? How are people attracting, you know, users into their spaces, into their downtowns, through things like awnings, lighting, signs, landscaping? These are the things that start to create that environment that you're looking for, that people, both residents and property owners, want to see. We also talk about, you know, you have an architectural-rich history here. You have a lot of buildings that have a style that is something to Elmhurst. So as new buildings start to come online, and new construction is encouraged, that they take or that they, they use those as a symbol or a guide, as these are the kind of materials, these are the kind of, the, the looks and the feels that people want to see in future buildings. Again, that is really small, so we'll, we can provide this as a PDF, but at, at the end of this document, and these are two pages, so I'm going to kind of bounce back and forth. At the end of this document, we take all of these plan recommendations that we've been discussing throughout this entire process of the plan, and break them down into, you know, those are recommendations, those are policies, those are things that, you know, you want to encourage, you'd like to see. What we're talking about here is taking those recommendations and making them actionable items. Amending the zoning code to reflect the recommendations that people are saying they want to see in the downtown. So things like amending the zoning code to include downtown appropriate standards related to the future plan development. So updating the plan development that allows it to be specific to, not necessarily height, that that's not the trigger, but that geography triggers it. So if you're in this downtown, you have an opportunity to do a PD or a plan development, but what is that plan development? So this is something that needs to be looked at, you know, basically right after the plan. Take, take the recommendations with this and maybe redraft that. It could be something that maybe is addressing the process. So instead of it being, because the underlying zoning, we're going to try to change, and that's something that we talk about, you know, we're going to address height, that's something the recommendations in the plan talk about. We're going to address permitted uses. So what would make a PD an incentive to a developer? Maybe the process would allow them the option to present to city council a concept plan upfront, as opposed to having to go through the full process and do something very detailed, and get to the end and it not be what everybody was hoping it would be. So this would give them an opportunity to almost vet it with council before they take that next step. So that's an option, something that the city should look into, maybe after you adopt this plan and want to move forward. You know, amending the permitted uses. There are some uses that just aren't even permitted. So it's not necessarily saying all, all uses should be allowed, but permit some, or, or give it a, a special consideration, or, you know, just, just allowing those to start to happen. It'll, it'll bring new uses into the downtown that currently aren't here. Things like establishing new standards for off-street parking within the downtown. We talk about that both on the residential side, but also the commercial side. Bike parking, off-street parking, removing requirements to provide off-street loading and/or loading docks in the future developments in the downtown. I know that was a key issue, one that we, you know, vetted over and over with the city, also with the public, making sure that that made sense, and how that would function, and how, how the alleys would facilitate those issues. Regularly the design of private property, like the streetscape, the downtown, so if there's a match between the streetscape and maybe a new development, so they all look consistent, they all feel like a part of the downtown. And then addressing recent zoning variances. So one of the first things you can do right off the bat is, what have been some of the recent variances? Why do these keep coming up as an issue, and how do we update the code? So these aren't the things that are on our plate. So those are just some of the recommendations from the, from the plan that are in that back half. So some of the next step is to remember that this plan, once it's adopted, will serve as that policy guide. It's something you can refer developers to in the future, architects, builders, anybody coming in saying, this is what people of Elmhurst want to see, but it's not regulatory. So that next step is to then take those actionable items and adopt them into the code where you can. Some of them won't, some of them will always be encouraged, or, you know, incentivized, but some you can make regulatory action, you know, setbacks, building heights, form, those types of things. And then formulating all of these regulatory strategies that you can, and then identifying specific sections within the city ordinance that should be changed to facilitate the recommendations of the updated downtown plan. That should be a key goal. So one of the first things you're going to want to check off is taking this plan and formalizing what you can. So with that, oh, I had a question slide, but I don't. So with that, if there's any questions, you can go through it.
Okay, appreciate the summary. Any questions for Mr. Davis at this time? Alderman Levin.
You know, I misspoke when I said 1992 plan conflicting with the 2006, it's the 1992 ordinance, but just because we're talking about it, if this is adopted, it will really, in my opinion, I want to see if there's agreement, it replaces the 2006 plan, it supersedes it.
Correct.
So we won't be looking back at that plan anymore.
Correct. Okay, any other questions? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, according to the plan document, a fundamental issue that was identified as being an issue with the community at large, is the need to balance, balance development with the preservation of local character. What are some of the ways that you see most effective at striking that balance?
So there's a couple of different ways, and we, we talk about it in a few different sections within the plan. And I will say that the plan encourages that new construction and new development occur. But when it occurs that you look at existing buildings that are here now, that people may say, you know, that, that to me is an Elmhurst building, or that, that is something that's specific to us architecturally, and that they use that as a model moving forward. If there are buildings that are here now that people feel have some type of significance, if it's architecturally, or just a building that's been here for a long time, the city could provide incentives. So something to promote it to property owners to either improve the facade, or perhaps adapt it, or reuse it for future, you know, if it's a new tenant or residential uses above, where it used to be office. So there's programs that could be put in place. If it's just a facade improvement program, that's one thing, if it's a rehab program. If it's a rehab program, that's another opportunity. So those are ways that you could incentivize people to bring their buildings maybe up to code or improve them. A lot of times you'll see buildings that maybe hit a hard time, don't look as good as they maybe used to when you look at the photos from 20 or 30 or 50 years ago. So that's one way to go about it. The other thing to remember is, is you go down the street, in some areas we're talking about, you know, building heights starting to build up over time. So then that's why I said this in a couple of different spots where I think there needs to be a good balance where possible between the heights that are coming in and the heights that are there now, but that you need to recognize that new development is going to start pushing up. That's, that's just the nature of development, especially when we're talking about TOD principles and building off of those kind of transit options. So I'm not sure if that entirely answered your question? Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Sure.
Alderman Dunn. You'd be Alderman Bram today.
Thank you. I guess when looking at the plan, one of the questions that strikes me, and I would like, I guess, your feedback on how you went about it, is how did you strike the balance of vision, which is what I deem a plan to be, versus regulatory or code changes, or at least some inference in regards to those code changes should be? My personal viewpoint on a plan, which this kind of crosses that, I guess arbitrary line, of it should be visionary, right? It shouldn't speak about specific code, it shouldn't speak about those policy decisions. It should really just be a high-level plan of what downtown Elmhurst should look like. So how did you guys go about of striking that balance of, you know, what is a regulatory, as you stated earlier in your presentation, or code change versus purely vision? Because there's a lot of nuts and bolts in this plan. Talking about exact height, talking about signage, talking about a lot of things that I deem to be policy code changes versus visionary.
Sure. Couple, couple things there. So I would agree. The ultimate goal of a downtown plan is to be that framework, that policy guide for the City Council, for residents, for property owners, for staff. In no area in this plan do we say, "You must build your building this tall," or "You can't do this." This is, we encourage, we'd like to see, you know, you know, over, over time, you want to see something like this happen. It's not regulatory, so nothing about this downtown plan is regulatory. Even the design guidelines are purely recommendations. Now, moving forward, you could take some of these recommendations in the design guideline and formalize them into the code, but that's not what this document's about. So it is, it's more vision than, well, it is vision, it's not regulatory. So what we're doing in that last half, or the last half, it's like the last five pages, is saying, now, within here, there are things that you could formalize. It's unlikely that you'll formalize all of them into zoning amendments. That would be, that would be incredible. I don't know if I've ever seen that, like 100%, but there are some things that are easy. Some are low-hanging fruit, you know, adopting the downtown plan's boundary to match, you know, well, adopting it into the zoning ordinance to match what it looks like in the downtown, just so there's consistency. That's something that's easy to do. When you start getting into things like permitted uses, you have to vet that. I mean, that's a part of the zoning update process. So, you know, nothing in here is like, you give it to a developer and say, "Well, you know, it's in the downtown plan, you have to do it." You give a developer that plan, and you say, "This is what people said they want to see." So it's very vision, it's very, it's uplifting. It's like, you hit the mark on these, you're going to be on track. That's what people want to see here, but they also need to review the zoning code because that's regulatory. That's what's telling them, must be done. Does that make sense? So policy document is the downtown plan, the zoning ordinance is ultimately what has to be done. So it's on the city to take what's in this policy plan and update the zoning code to reflect what we're saying everybody wants to see, but it's not the law.
Understood. It's, it's not the law, and I guess my concerns were, as you referenced, I think it was the last five pages of the plan, making these recommendations. It, you know, during your presentation, you made statements of, you know, a developer could, and I think you just, in response to my question, said the same thing, a developer could look at this plan and be pretty much on par with what the city's vision is. Well, I think that's a little bit misleading when, really, what the city's vision is today is the code today. I don't know if a plan should ever have even recommendations of what code should change. It should be visionary, and it should stop at visionary compared to taking it to the next level. Whoever the elected body is at that time should then vet, you know, how do I translate that vision into reality and therefore into code? So that's why I was concerned seeing that last handful of pages, recommendations, and, you know, some statements that you just made of, you know, a developer should look at this plan, and it's pretty much on par with what our vision is. Really, any developer should be looking at maybe what the long-term vision of Elmhurst is, but with, which is what this is, but the code is essential, and it just seems a little bit confusing to me by mentioning both, that's all.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, just moving forward, a developer will look at both. They'll look at the downtown plan to get a sense of, because when I say "city," I don't mean just the, the city of Elmhurst, but I mean the residents. You know, all the feedback that we receive, that gets lost in a zoning ordinance, it's not lost here. This is clear that this is a bunch of, or this is the culmination of all the feedback that we received. That's why it's a little lofty, there's some goals in here that are attainable but challenging, whereas in a zoning code, it's cut and dry. Like, it's, you know, it's five feet or six feet, or it's very, it's very deliberate. This is meant to really set the stage for what you would like to see, and then as a city, there's things in here that you can formalize, so.
Alderman Mulliner.
Yes, I kind of would like to address that just for a second. This plan, the, the ultimate goal of it is just exactly what was said, it's to provide a vision, but it's also to provide us some action items, if you will. There's a tendency to put together these plans and for us to just kind of put them on the shelf and say, "Okay, these are the plans." People look at them and they say, "These are the visions." But what happens is, long-term, we forget to go back to those plans and modify our zoning ordinance in order to match that plan. And ultimately, that's where, when you're talking about this line here of what's policy and what's vision, this is vision, but at the same time, what it's also doing is it's providing us some of those action items that we need to take in order to codify this, so that we actually have the plan matching what's in the code. And if this is the vision that we're getting from the city of Elmhurst, and we believe that this is the vision, then we need to take that next step, and that is to take these action items that they've provided for us and go through and make sure that we've put those into the code in the appropriate locations. So that's, that's where I have always worked with a plan. A plan is a great tool, but you have to have that next step, which is the action items, and those have been provided for us, saying, "You got to do these things in order for this to really become reality."
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, just one question. One of the recommendations in the report was to remove the density requirement in favor of using a minimum unit size, and I'm wondering why that's viewed as more favorable? Because if you have a mixed development with different unit sizes in it, the, the way to evaluate the overall congestion of that development would be, in my mind, the density of it. You may have a few units that are smaller, but then you may have others that are much larger, so just maybe you can elaborate on that recommendation.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a couple of things, but the, the key one, and you sort of touched on it there, is you, you can set, it's very clear and cut when you just set what the minimum unit size is. They're still offering a number, so in a sense, the way densities evaluated or calculated, you can get the same result, it's just it's easier, or I would say, like, it's easier to calculate when you just set the minimum size, and then from there, like, it's a similar discussion when you talk about like FAR. It's a, it's a complicating calculation, when ultimately what we're trying to drive at is a certain amount of units, and it's, it's something that we have to address when we do parking anyway, so we would know how many units are driving, how much parking spaces are required. So we're just trying to simplify it where possible, so.
Any additional comments? Alderman Bram? Oh, for two.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to some of the comments of what the plan is to some of the elected officials on here. I guess, I just wanted to throw out an example, and the example being, I would find it hard to believe that the public came back and said, and I forgot already, four stories in the inner core and conditional use up to 10 stories. And that's what I mean by there's "I believe" too much detail when you're coming to a plan. I love the fact of the plan that there's inner, outer core, et cetera, down the line. I think that's great vision, and I think we should do something along those lines. But to put in a plan, what it is not only for permitted use but also for conditional use, that's not a plan to me. That's dictating or almost laying the pavement down for what the code should be, you know, coming down the line. That should be a separate discussion compared to vision. And that's the detail I was kind of getting at, where, you know, it's talking about what type of signs, it's talking about exactly what height, it talks about a lot of that stuff where I think is code versus vision, that's all.
Okay, any additional comments? All right, I'm going to excuse Mr. Davis at this time. Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Jeff.
And for your answers. And back to the motion before us, which is Agenda Item 7.1 and a motion to approve the report. Any additional comments as it relates to this report and the motion before us? Alderman Bram.
Yeah, I want to touch in detail a little bit more. Now, we're not talking about the plan so much in general, but the report that coincides with it. Item number six, as I referenced just a few minutes ago in the report, says establish new building heights within each downtown district and core district making a statement of six stories by right and 10 stories.
Alderman Bram?
Yes, sir.
Where, which document are you referring to?
The report.
Okay. Oh, item six, okay.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I think it's page three, yeah.
All right, go ahead. I had the downtown plan up.
And I'm concerned with a lot of what's in this report and the detail and the level of nature that it's proposing here, because I think we're blurring plan versus code. I don't think in a plan, and I don't know exactly the right terminology, but I don't think in a plan we should state what the core district height should be, what the outer core, et cetera, down the line. And I'm going to go for it. With that said, I'm going to make a motion to remove item six on page three in its entirety.
I don't think there's anything that precludes this motion, except I don't, let me ask, I think it's just a summary of the plan, so even if you motion it out of the report, it's still going to be in the plan. Okay, motion to remove.
If that's the case, Mr. Mayor, then, I mean, any of the motions per the report would be non-beneficial, to say it nicely. So then I will withdraw the motion if there's absolutely no point in making a motion on...
Yeah, I think page two of the report, right before you get to these numbers, this is a summary of what's in the report. So you can, you can remove it from this report, whether or not you get support for that or not, but it'll still be in the report, it'll still be in the plan. But I don't think it achieves what you're looking to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, my thought process was that it would remove it from the plan as well. If you, if you're stating that that is not the case, then I withdraw the motion.
Okay. All right, motion withdrawn, additional comments?
Just on the report, and I think we're about to vote on the plan. The plan is the vision document, and there's no question that when the consultants working and talking to different people, I don't think the public came up with the idea of the different new zones we have and the concentric circles or whatever they are. So it was kind of developed, but I would be, I wouldn't want to necessarily change the plan, which reflects a tremendous amount of public input. It doesn't mean, though, that, it is the plan. So if it comes forward and it starts going through zoning, that's the time for us to look at and say, "Well, here's what the plan is. Maybe it should be seven stories as matter of right, maybe it should be five stories." But we're mindful of what the plan says as our starting point. I think it has another purpose that I've seen. We had a proposal for a bank up on Butterfield Road, and, you know, people took out the plan, and it was used in conjunction with a variance or a conditional use or some combination, and it was said that, "Well, look, the plan is this should be office institutional or something like that." So it has other uses, but it's not the zoning component, and there are certain things, as Nick Davis said, where we will want to start looking at them right away, and others may, you know, who knows, there could be another plan before we ever got around to getting fully adopted. There's a lot in there. So, we're mindful of the two different purposes of the plan and the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Additional comments? Yes, Alderman Tulluto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this year-and-a-half-long process. I think that it is a wonderful tool for us to have as a city, for our residents, for potential developers, property owners, et cetera. And while, by definition, since it tackles such a large number of issues, probably not everybody will agree on everything. I think that Alderman Levin stated it nicely in that this is a plan, this is a vision, it is a great starting point for us moving forward, and as we begin to take the actions to put some of these recommendations in place with this vision, I think it will be a great place for us to start, have a great discussion, and have the next 20-some years of what our downtown city should look like set out through this vision. So I thank everybody for their work, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you. With that said, I just want to voice some of my concerns, and I am conflicted in regards to, at least what I perceive to be my approval or disapproval of this plan. Statements have been made in regards to what is the use of the plan, and I've heard over my 15 years, the use of the plan being used for an argument and against an argument. I've seen developers wave the former plans in their hands and say, "How dare you move forward in this direction for the zoning code change, because your plan says something different?" I don't want to trivialize what the, the plan has been utilized for in the past and what I see it being utilized in the future. I don't recall any legal action being taken against us referencing a plan, but I have seen both elected staff as well as developers utilize the plans in their arguments for their case, whatever side that is. So I'm more cautious maybe than most of trivializing on how it's going to be used, and, you know, when we talk about actually code changes, that's when we should really be concerned, and I agree, we should. But those same arguments have been used in the past. Well, how dare you not go along with this, because our plan says so? Didn't you approve the plan? And that's my concern here, that we could say something today, but then down the line, it, it may be utilized in a different manner. I don't see, I, I see there being too much detail in here and laying the roadwork for zoning code changes and that being utilized as part of the argument for zoning code changes. I'm not in agreement of having the detail in item six, the building height. I'm not in agreement in regards to item seven, removing regulations requiring dwelling units per acre and replacing them with regulations stating minimum unit size. And there's others in here as well, in regards to maximum of three parking spaces per thousand square feet. We're saying a maximum? Who in the city of Elmhurst have ever said, "Hey, there's too much parking"? I definitely have concerns over the detail for visionary strategic document. The tactical nature is the coding changes. This is the vision, this is the strategic. It should be more general. So I, as I'm speaking, I guess I cannot support this. There's a lot of good things in this plan, and I do think there's a lot of good work in this and a lot of great ideas, but the level of detail and how plans have been utilized in regards to discussion topics, I'm concerned with this level of detail and what position it puts the city of Elmhurst in the future when developers make requests for us. Conditional uses are meant for that, to evaluate things on a case-by-case basis. I believe in some of these very specific statements, we're handcuffing ourselves.
Alderman Mulliner.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that I don't believe there's anybody on the council who takes this as a trivial situation. This is a very serious plan as far as what the downtown will look like for who knows how long. And it's, and as we've said, this is specifically a plan, it's not giving, it gives details, but it's not saying that they must do this. It's saying, it's giving suggestions as to what we can change. It's saying, it's giving suggestions as to what we can change if that's what we deem necessary. But this is a very serious document that we have all taken very seriously. And I, and I feel it's very important for that to be said publicly because this is something that we've put a lot of work into. There's been a lot of community members who have been involved in this process. And this is something that I believe is really going to have an impact on what the city of Elmhurst is going to be like for the next twenty, thirty years. So I think it's important for us to make sure that the public knows that there's a group of people taking this very seriously up here.
Okay, any final comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the roll on the motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist, absent.
Wagner, absent.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Ten ayes, one nay, three absent.
Ten ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Report approving recommended downtown plan is approved. I obviously don't get the vote and I don't opine during, during motion. But I do want to say, I want to thank everybody who was involved in this, and really, it's almost forty-four thousand people. The residents and Mr. Davis went through the amount of input that was put into this document. It's almost second to none. And I think it's a fantastic document. It's a guideline and, but with anything, I mean, there's fourteen Aldermen up here that vote when we put a, put a stop sign in the ground. So anything, any action that's taken, in my opinion, will get fully vetted. But this answers a lot of questions and ultimately, in my opinion, most importantly, solicited opinion and what the residents of Elmhurst wanted. And I'm glad that we're getting to see the end of it. It's been a lot of hard work, but it's going to be a great reference tool for all elected officials when it's time to make some of those difficult decisions. So I want to, I appreciate everyone had an opportunity to provide input and work on it. Got a couple of members in the audience, Stan Warner, our zoning and planning administrator, is here. And Darryl Whistler, who's chairman of Zoning and Planning Commission. I know they had a hand in this as well. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work. Onto Agenda Item 7.2. Hopefully mine are numbered right. This is a report out of Public Affairs and Safety. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city council approve the purchase of a three-location, five-camera automated license plate reader system from Bright Computers. The committee recommends the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed by Chris Healy, Chairman, Danny Palmsky, Vice Chairman, and Norm Leader.
Okay, to put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Palmsky, second by Alderman Leader. Alderman Palmsky, this is a report out of your committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we have on the agenda a recommendation to proceed with the purchase of five automated license plate readers, or ALPRs, or LPRs. We're at this point after the completion of a sixty-five day trial period and the development of a departmental policy. As a refresher, the committee and the council discussed this topic before beginning the trial. After some discussion, the committee, at the committee and council levels, we decided, or there was a decision, a staff decision and after council discussion, to conduct a trial to assess the efficacy and the potential of utilizing this on a regular basis within the police department. During the trial period in which Vigilant Video Systems mounted an LPR device at St. Charles and Fair, the data captured and furthered six investigations, including two residential burglaries, two burglary to motor vehicles, and one retail theft. The police department determined that the ALPRs had potential to also assist the department in other locations based on historical crime trends and known escape routes. In addition to the eastbound St. Charles and Fair location, the department identified North Avenue going eastbound at Clinton and York Street southbound between Industrial Drive and Lake Street. To cover the five lanes identified in these three locations, five units are necessary because one unit can only capture license plates from one lane of traffic at a time. Guidelines were established to support the recommendation of the ALPR program. And these internal guidelines cover the purpose and scope, administration, operation, and data collection and retention. The funding for this is covered, of this approximately fifty-three thousand dollars, is covered by asset and forfeiture funds. And it includes the software, technical support, and the devices themselves. An RFP process was conducted and two responses were received. The vendor selected Bright Computers was the lower of the two bids. In the future, there will be a relatively small cost to maintaining this, approximately five hundred dollars per unit, so twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's not eligible to be covered by the asset and forfeiture funding. So we'd have to budget for that. With the measurable success in helping law enforcement apprehend suspects during the trial period and after the development of an internal policy, I ask for your support to move forward with these five ALPR devices.
Okay, Alderman Leader.
These cameras are in common use, not only throughout the state of Illinois, but the entire nation as well. Their purpose is to aid the police in the prevention and solution of crimes. They will be used judiciously, and they will in no way infringe on our constitutional rights to privacy. The main justification for civil government is public safety. These cameras will make Elmhurst an even safer place than it is now. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. And Alderman Leader's comments just kind of touched on this. And maybe if the committee may indulge me and expand a little bit in depth. I know the first time that this was talked about, when we were doing the trial, last year, I believe sometime, there was the concerns over privacy and how the data would be used and how frequent the data stored. If the committee would please kind of talk a little bit more in depth in regards to that so the public at large knows that, that data will not be utilized in, in any bit, manner that would infringe on their right to privacy. The next question, I believe also for the committee, would be, when we discussed this topic during the budget cycle with the police department, it didn't seem like at that time there was a need to move forward with this. According to the report, it says the police department has requested to implement a fixed ALPR program at these specific three locations. Could the committee please expound on that discussion with the police department? And why there's, I, I guess, at least in my perspective, a change of heart on the need for this at this point in time?
Alderman Palmsky, I think it's a policy question on how it's used and how the data is used. And then any information on the police requesting it?
Sure. Okay, so I will address the questions about privacy, how information is used and stored. This information that is stored and technically owned by Vigilant Video is available by subscription only and only to law enforcement agencies. ALPR captures an image of a car, of a vehicle, an infrared image of a license plate, a time and date stamp, and the location of the camera. There is no identifying information that is captured by this of an individual. For somebody to figure that out, they need law enforcement status and they need to be able to have access to take a license plate number and identify a person. The chief of police will assign the Investigations Division personnel to administer the day-to-day operations. Officers have to complete, officers within Elmhurst, and this is part of what the police department has come up with to be able to adequately and I think safely utilize this technology. There has to be, the officers involved in using this technology have to complete in-house training that's been approved. It can only be used, ALPR data can only be used for legitimate law enforcement purposes in compliance with state law. All ALPR inquiries must be documented with an associated department case report number and the purpose of the inquiry. There's a login, a password and a login for anybody who's able to utilize this within the department. And the Investigations Commander is responsible for ensuring proper data collection and retention. The chief of police will oversee that on an approximate monthly basis and assess for any irregularities. As far as, you know, the Vigilant Video will delete information as recommended by a local government. And we have not established those guidelines. It's my understanding that that has not been decided at the state level yet, that there are some recommendations that are still pending. So we don't, we can't govern that. Mayor, I, I think, I don't know.
The other question was, the police department asked for it, any conversation?
Well, I, I don't know if it was a change of heart. It's my understanding that this was a trial and then we would receive information from the department on how they wanted to proceed. And there is a memo from January 2016 from the police department explaining that in these, with these six incidents, that it was helpful and then identifying the other locations, specifically at North Avenue and Clinton, there were some burglaries, forgery, auto theft, or theft from an auto and a robbery, that their idea was perhaps this may have been helpful in those cases. And the same thing at York Street between Industrial and Lake, robbery, commercial burglary, that perhaps ALPR could have been helpful in those cases. So it was really a recommendation from the police department. I don't know if it was a change of heart.
Thank you. Okay, any additional comments or questions? Clerk Spencer, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist, absent.
Wagner, absent.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda Item 7.2 is approved. Onto Agenda Item 7.3. This is a report on finance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to petition the court to have the residential portion of the Elmhurst 255 project disconnected from SSA number six. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman, Noel Pal, Toledo, and Mark P. Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is a report, as it, as the city clerk stated, recommend, this committee recommending that we remove the residential portion that has now been identified in a legal manner from the entire Elmhurst 255 project. And I'd like to thank city staff, in particular Mike Kopp and Tom Trozine, for doing a lot of work on presenting the historical perspective of the formation of the original SSAs and then the subsequent SSAs. Originally, the downtown area was formed with one SSA that did everything. And then as residential developments became more common, there were services and processes that were determined to be relative to marketing and promotion of the downtown area and services that were relative to upkeep and, and maintenance and those types of things. So I'd like to thank them. That history is attached to the report and I'm sure everybody had the opportunity to read it and pick it apart. But what became clear to the committee was the fact that, that Elmhurst, or that residential portions of property were never really to be included in SSA number six, which is responsible for the marketing and the promotion, those types of activities that occur within SSA number six in the city center. So with that being said, and, and if the taxes were levied against those, it would, it would be quite a, quite a tax burden on those residential portions. So the committee definitely agreed that we needed to take a look at that. And we all agreed that it would be in the best interest to petition the court to remove those from the SSA number six. Another whole conversation is going to be on a potential SSA to replace an expired one, but that's neither here nor there for the purposes of this report. It should also be noted that this is something that hasn't been done in DuPage County. So we'd be petitioning the circuit clerk, clerk, or the circuit court in DuPage County. And we're not sure what the answer is going to be. So when we go to petition the court, they may say, we agree. Let's get rid of it. Let's take it out of the SSA. They could also say, no, we don't agree with that. And then we'll have to address that when that time comes, if that time comes. So the other thing to consider there is, is that this isn't a blanket request. This is a request specific to the Elmhurst 255 property. So it'll take about four weeks from this point in time to get the petition ready. There's posting periods and everything. We anticipate that it'll be four to six weeks before the court actually hears the case. And then we don't know how long it might take them to render it. So it's a, it's a three to six month process from this point forward to get an answer. And if the answer is, yes, let's have it, yes, it should be removed, we would have to go through the same process, although we believe it might be easier the second, third, fourth, and fifth times through. But we have to go through this process for each and every mixed-use project that gets built within the legal boundaries of SSA number six. So we already know there's a project of Opus One, we know there's a project where the Plaize Building was. We can see that there's more sites like this on the radar. So the committee felt that it was important to begin this process now, to petition the court relative to this one project, see what kind of finding we get from the court and move on from there. The committee also agreed that we would begin the process of looking at replacement SSAs. That is mentioned in one paragraph of the report. There are committee members who believe that it's important that we run on, that we address both issues during the same relative timeframe, but they are clearly separate, separate issues as far as the, the process and the court and everything is concerned. So kind of a, a more difficult concept, but hopefully the report and the information attached to it kind of give everybody a good clue as to what we're trying to accomplish here. And I ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay, any comments? Alderman Dunn?
Just some follow-ups to some of the items that Chairman York had discussed. It became evident to the committee that this SSA six was intended for residential purpose because that was clearly spelled out in the original report when this SSA was formed back in nineteen ninety-four and then updated in two thousand and four. So the SSA six does not expire, whereas the SSA seven did back in two thousand and fourteen. SSA seven was more for the beautification and maintenance, things like the, the plants and the snow removal that businesses and, and residents get to enjoy. But the SSA six was, was more for the marketing and promotion of the downtown. The project that we were looking at, the building that everyone sees going up, has three components to it. One is the residential. One is the residential, which we are looking to remove from the SSA. There's also the city property, which we discussed earlier tonight, the parking, which is not part of the, it's not a taxable entity. And then there's the commercial retail that's going in there, which will still remain in that. So it's, just to be clear, it's only the residential portion of that property that's being pulled out. And some EAV values that we got from our finance department, the current EAV for the downtown area is told $32 million and the estimated EAV for the, the Elmhurst 255 project when it's all complete and up and running would be about $10 million. So if we didn't pull this out, the residents would be of that project, the residents would in turn be paying for that, the developer would pay for it directly and the residents indirectly. They'd be kind of subsidizing 25% of that, of that SSA. And that budget is about $700,000, $800,000 for those type of marketing and promotional activities. So the committee felt that it was the right thing to do to pull residents out. We have in the past in some of the other developments, they're, they're not included when the, when the revision to the SSA six was drawn up. So it really, the precedent was set to make, make sure that the residential properties were not involved in the SSA six. So just some more detail to lend a little clarity to the, what we're trying to do here. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Graham?
Yeah, and thank you Alderman York and Alderman Dunn for that explanation and the rest of the committee as well and staff. I'm still looking for a little bit of clarity. In the past, were residential units part of or paying into SSA six? And are there any to date paying into SSA six? And then I'll follow up depending on those answers if there's a need for follow-up.
Alderman York?
No, and no.
So never has been and none today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. With that said, I mean, I, with that clarification, I, I definitely agree with this report wholeheartedly and I commend the committee for looking at, I guess, moving forward with another SSA for clarity overall with what we're, what's going on with the SSAs downtown. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Clerk Spencer, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist absent. Wagner absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.3 is approved. Onto agenda item 7.4. This is a report on DPNC and I ask Clerk Spencer to please read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Development Planning and Zoning Committee that the city council approve the resolution for the potential TIF redevelopment areas of Church Road and Lake Street. The committee is also requesting the proposed TIF report and redevelopment plan to be placed on file with the Elmhurst City Clerk no later than June 10, 2016. The draft resolution and TIF report and redevelopment plan are attached for your review. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman Michael Hanquist.
Okay. To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin.
Thank you. The TIF process is a statutorily regulated process and there are certain specific steps that have to be taken in the order that they're set forth. This is not final approval of the TIF. It's keeping the ball rolling that direction, I would say. And if we have a timeline that was presented to the council and our committee of the whole of if the TIF is going to be approved, it must be done to allow porting from TIF two by the end of the year and this puts, keeps us on the schedule. And two of the things that are required to get to a final TIF ordinance would be a public hearing and a joint review board has to be formed and they have to meet for their input. So the committee, to keep us on the track, is designated July 13th as the date for the joint review board to be meeting and the public hearing to be on August 15th. In order to do that, if you work backwards, we need to adopt the, this resolution by June 20th. And in order to have the resolution adopted, we have to have the draft TIF report or plan, I should say, on file. And so if we pass this tonight, we would then move to put the, we would put it on file with the clerk and then we would take it up again on June 20th. And then going forward, JRB would be July 13th, public hearing August 15th and it will eventually come back to us. So that, that's what this report is and attached to it is the plan portion that talks about what, all of the steps I've talked about are in the resolution, I should say. They go along with the report that sort of set forth some of these requirements. So not final action, but moving down the road and I ask for your support.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Dunn.
Just a clarification, the resolution indicates draft, so will there be another one coming June 20th, a final version of the resolution?
Yes, we have to have 10 days of this being on, the plan being on file, then we will adopt this resolution. And city attorney papers, it can be a resolution instead of an ordinance, is my recollection.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Clerk Spencer, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist absent. Wagner absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.4 is approved. Onto agenda item eight, reports and recommendations. Mayor Morley, I'll keep mine short as it's 9:30 and we still have half of an agenda to go through. Couple items of note. This Thursday, we have another Stormwater Communications Committee meeting here at City Hall, 7 o'clock Thursday. Parks and Schools have been invited. Parks were not at the last one. They had some work to do and they have, have had two meetings since then, so we're hoping to get an update from them on, they're working on some comments to the design of the York Commons Project. Hopefully we'll get final input from them, which is required per our IGA, IGA, did I say RGA? IGA. In addition, we hope to get feedback from them on the Golden Meadows Project. School District, we met with them, I think on the 26th of last month and they're invited to this one. We're asking for a clarification on their ask, one of their asks that they have for Bryan Junior High gravel lot and asking for further clarification on other projects that they put on hold, what they need or how much time they need and what they need to see to take those projects off of hold. So those will be questions we'll be discussing Thursday night. The elected officials should have up in, at their seat, their Explore Elmhurst bag. This is a website that highlights everything, the see and do in the city of Elmhurst, kind of a, more of a marketing website highlighting things going on versus information or versus governmental, I should say. In addition, our Explore Elmhurst Express, which is our trolley, our free trolley that's free to residents and visitors to Elmhurst, kicked off on the 3rd and it goes through September 18th. And I know we had a successful weekend on that, so that's good. The last thing and possibly in my opinion, one of the most important national holidays of the year, Memorial Day, we, the city of Elmhurst has celebrated Memorial Day. And it's obviously time for the citizens and really the country to remember those who lost their lives so that we could have the life that we have here today, quite frankly. And it was a terrific parade, well attended, fantastic weather compared to the year before. And it was great to see everybody out. Special thanks go out to Ralph Pachanio, he's the head of our Veterans Commission, Bill Shanklin, who is the master of ceremonies for the, the event we host after, immediately after the parade at the War Memorial in Wilder Park. And John Quigley, Chamber also helps out in pulling that parade together. And that's it for me for reports. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. I do have a few items. One relating to the TIF, potential TIF five. At your position tonight was a memo and on the backside of that front page is the statement of direct or indirect interest. We need each of the elected officials to fill that out and submit it to the city clerk's office or to me so that we can move forward with all that. Thank you to those who have taken that, taken the time to do that. It's very quick. If you can do it tonight, that'd be great. I'll even take it this evening. Secondly, last week, the police department conducted a fundraiser for Special Olympics, the cop on top at the Dunkin' Donuts on the north side of town. And I just was informed that they collected over $5,500 for Special Olympics on that day, which was 30% increase from the year before. So that's incredible and thanks to, to those volunteers. I know the Citizens Police Academy plays a big role in that, in that volunteering as well. Next, building on what Alderman Dunn had said about the neighborhood roll calls, those have been rolled out for the year. You can go to the police department Facebook page to see when the future roll calls are as well. And then last, we have an introduction tonight. Julian McDonough, who is our Assistant Finance Director, started today and she is sitting next to Tom Trozine and so we welcome her. It's a great first day. So we look forward to working with her as we move forward on all these projects.
Okay. Any other reports from the dais? Alderman York?
Thank you, your honor. So I'd like to share some information on behalf of the Finance, Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee regarding the Elmhurst Electrical Aggregation Program. The Communications Director, Cassandra Schreff, has put together a, a press release that'll go out by noon tomorrow on this. But the city council may recall that about quarterly, we get an update as a committee from the consultant, David Hoover Nymec, is, is the company, the consultant that we hire. And we kind of keep our fingers on the pulse of what's going on with the, with the aggregation program. As you'll recall, we started the program in 2012. We signed a two-year, well, we, we had a referendum to create the ability to aggregate electricity services. And then we took bids and selected our first company in 2012 for a two-year contract. And then we renewed the aggregation program in 2014 for a three-year contract. During the course of the aggregation period, there's been savings to date of about $3.7 million community-wide, or the average homeowner's electric bill has been reduced by over $250 during this timeframe because of the aggregation program. Along with that too, the entire time we've been under the aggregation program, we've used green energy, 50% of the power coming from renewable sources, which ultimately saves carbon dioxide in our, in our air. So a lot of good things are, have come of the aggregation, but unfortunately, the commodity market for electricity has kind of mirrored that of gasoline. But when we talk about gasoline, we say that's a fortunate thing because gasoline prices have gone down, electricity prices have gone down. And what it simply means is that as of, with the, the recent rate announcement from ComEd, who is the utility provider of electricity supply, the average rate is now a little bit over one cent less per kilowatt hour, we can see pretty much in the crystal ball through May of, of next year. And that's about 13 or 14% lower than, than our aggregation rate on the supply side. And economically, it just doesn't make any sense anymore for us to stay on the aggregation program. Now, so what does that mean? Unfortunately, the city can't call somebody and say, take everybody off the aggregation program. This is going to require some work and that's why we're working on the press release and we'll also disseminate information on how to accomplish this. But the long and the short of it is, is that people who are on the aggregation program, and it clearly says on your utility bill that you're on Constellation, that you're on the Elmhurst Aggregation Program, you will need to call a toll-free number, 844. You'll need to have your electricity account number present with you when you make that phone call and you will have to ask to be switched to the ComEd or utility provision of the electricity supply. So this will all be in the press release. This is going to be on the city website under News and Information tomorrow. But this is just an economic reality of the electricity rate market. We, we made a good deal. We saved consumers money. Unfortunately, it's a commodity and we can no longer keep up economically with what's out there in the marketplace. You know, so it's a good time to switch. Our program runs through the end, through August of 2017. At that point in time, we may or may not decide, it'll be in committee, we may or may not decide to go back out for aggregation bids. We knew going into the program in 2014 that the margins were thinner. We weren't going to be saving as much money going on, but there was still savings at that time. That's why we decided to do it. Can't make that call right now, but if we do decide to do it, it'll be on our agenda and we'll let the public know. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have, but keep your eyes open and spread the word to your constituents that now is the time to make the switch. And the good thing is, there's no fee for switching. That was in our contract agreement with them. If for some reason, there could be another rate adjustment in October, I don't think it's going to be much by the utility. If something went awry there, 60 days, 60 days or is it six months? Six months after you make a switch, you can go back to the company you switched from. You'd have to be off of it for six months, but then you could go back. We don't think that's going to happen. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to provide that update and information will be on the city's website tomorrow.
Alderman Levin.
Is this information something that might go out in the utility bills we send to the residents, even though it's on electricity, it's?
I think.
There is, there are inserts in there, I don't know.
I'm thinking we're, that's, we're kind of leaving that to Cassandra and she's going to kind of get back with us to all the different avenues we have to disseminate this information. Obviously, it's very important, but yes, we'll, we'll make every effort to, on every front, attack it.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Graham?
Thank you. I have a handful this evening, one of which a resident spoke to me about that the last city council meeting has not been broadcast on Comcast at all. I would like to make that request for city staff to follow up and not only follow up on that, I mean, I spoke to Mr. Trozine before this council meeting and he stated he will look into it. But the, the subsequent request is to, if that has been the case, to run it for the subsequent two weeks, just like it typically is done. The next item I wanted to touch on was O'Hare Airport. I know we've talked about it a few weeks ago. I received lots of feedback as, as well as from what I have experienced myself, it's only getting worse compared to better. Over these past two weeks since our last council meeting, the noise has increased exponentially and I will tell from at least my own experience, when I try to report noise in, over the phone line, it's a 50/50 chance that I actually get through and it doesn't get dropped. dropped. So it's been a little bit counterproductive trying to report something when you can't get through. The next item I wanted to touch on, and it ties into the fact of ComEd. There's a high tension power lines in the north side of town. The ComEd right-of-way is underneath. Every single year, within the last few years, it is a struggle to get to ComEd to maintain, otherwise cut the grass, like every resident is responsible for, in the ComEd right-of-way. Just this past week, and I have followed up with city staff on this this year multiple times, as well as in previous years, this past week, they finally cut it. Before they cut it, and I could happily supply some photos, it was literally, not figuratively, literally in some spots, four feet tall. That is unacceptable. I don't think that's being a good neighbor. We don't allow residents to do that, and for us, to allow ComEd, the utility company, to do something like, like that is despicable. I made the request of speaking with ComEd in the past. ComEd has been out here in regards to power outages, and they have done a good job in regards to improving that. But it is also their responsibility to maintain their property, just like any other resident in town. The feedback I've received from conversations between city staff and ComEd is along the lines of, "So I'm having that discussion now, I'll let you know." I wish a City of Elmhurst resident would return comment to, um, city staff, saying, essentially, "I'll get to it when I get to it." We need to hold ComEd to the same standards as we do as the residents. This has caused a line-of-sight issue on Van Aken and Wrightwood, significant. Recent weeks, we have approved a plan for streetscaping on the North York Corridor, and how we allow ComEd to cut the grass for the first time this last week is despicable. And for ComEd's response to pretty much tell us, "We'll do it when we want to," is despicable and unacceptable. From my understanding, the previous discussions with ComEd and the city is, "We will cut it once a month." I don't even think that's acceptable. We don't allow residents to do that. We shouldn't let our fellow utility company do that. Next item, public safety. We've heard lots of comments, not only tonight, we've, we've received comments for many a months now in regards to public safety, and what are we doing as a council? I'm not sure where the referral is going in regards to that discussion, but I've held comment back, and I know one other Alderman at least have spoken to it publicly, and I'm at the point now that I wanna at least make a comment on that. I am concerned about where we are from a public safety perspective. I would like, city staff has already presented their, uh, a memo in the past, but I would like, in the relatively near future, a report on what is our vision and how are we moving forward with public safety. I agree, public safety is, should be, and is to me, one of the main concerns, and we need to make sure that we're doing everything in our power to guarantee the safety of our residents. We've done so, we've done so? We did so tonight with, um, the license plate reader moving forward, and we should do so from all aspects, including fire in this instance. My last report or recommendation would be, in regards to our procedures, we talked about a little bit on May sixteenth. This agenda tonight causes me great concern. I have seen so many suspension of rules to approve reports and ordinances in the same night. We are minimizing the opportunity for the public to speak to any of these given issues. I understand there's exceptions to the rule. In my view, we are making it the rule compared to the exception. And I know some of you that I've spoke to on the dais, some other elected officials, agree with this sentiment as well. I am concerned with multitude of issues on tonight's agenda. I'm not saying there's nothing wrong with it, it's not illegal, I'm not trying to make that accusation or infer that, but we need to do better in regards to our procedures up here, to give every opportunity for every single issue to allow the report to be discussed on a separate night compared to the ordinance and/or resolution. And in tonight's agenda, it became the rule and not the exception.
Any other reports from elected officials? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, ordinances. Nine point one. Clerk Spencer, I ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance providing for the insurance of twenty-five million dollars, it's not issuance, not insurance, I'm sorry, issuance of twenty-five million dollars, general obligation bonds, series twenty-sixteen, for the purchase of financing stormwater projects and paying the expenses, expenses incident thereto, providing for the levy and the collection of a direct annual tax sufficient for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the winning bidder thereof.
She ran out of what I got. Okay. To approve this ordinance, I will ask for a motion, motion to approve the ordinance. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, why don't you fill us in on what happened today?
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. So I think what I'd, what I'd like, well, today was a good day. Today was a, a great day. On, um, we, we sold twenty-five million dollars worth of bonds, and on Friday, if anybody was paying attention, the bond market, or the, uh, interest rate market took a pretty big hit on long-term rates, and I said to my wife, who's a banker, "This is awesome," and she goes, "This isn't good." So it just depends on, you know, which side of the, of the screen you're sitting on when you go to a bank. So today was a really good day for the City of Elmhurst. We issued twenty-five million dollars worth of, of bonds, per a report that this committee put together on April twenty-fifth. We prescribed a range of two and a half to three percent. It actually came in pretty much just right in the middle at two point seven eight. And we actually got a premium on the bonds. I'm, Mr. Kevin McKenna from our bond agent, uh, from Spear Financial, who handles all our bond placements, is here. So in a moment, I'm gonna ask for a motion to suspend the rule so he can bring the council and the residents up to speed on the particulars of the sale. But just one thing that I'd like to point out is, last year was the first non-bank qualified, non-bank qualified issue, which means more than ten million dollars that we've had in quite some time, and that sold at about three point three percent. Today, we issued twenty-five million dollars, and that sold at two point, roughly two point eight percent. So just like we talked about commodities and electricity and everything a little bit earlier, interest rates are kind of commodities, and they go up and down, and we just happened to hit the market at a, at a pretty good time to really, I think, do a, a good service to the citizens of, of the City of Elmhurst. Again, the proceeds from this bond are going entirely for stormwater projects, and the principal and interest will be paid for by a, a sales tax. So it's not going on the property tax bill, it's gonna be paid for by sales taxes. We're gonna have a little lag here this month from June first until June thirtieth, where the sales tax went down one quarter percent July first. It'll be reinstated as a home rule sales tax, and it will entirely fund the bond purchase, the, uh, the bond sale that we did today. So I would like to ask, uh, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. McKenna to address the city council, if I could. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, it's just to allow him to speak. We're not suspending the rules, it just, it compensates for it. So, motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. We're gonna do a voice vote on this to allow this gentleman to fill us in further on the bond issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Good evening. I think Alderman York said everything I was gonna say. It was a really good day. The, uh, if you looked at today's Wall Street Journal, there's a large article on the front page in one of the sections talking about what a great deal the municipal bond market is because all sorts of rates are dropping so much, but there's at least so much strength and good investment in the bond market. So we did the sale today at nine forty-five. I think you have our report in front of you. The first page shows the ten bidders who showed up. Last year, there were eight. And the best bid was Janie Montgomery, Scott out of Philadelphia, two point seven eight. The second page is the screenshot, the final screenshot, from the internet sale, and that shows that while there were ten bidders, there were actually forty-seven bids. Janie bid three times to win, Stiefel bid three times to come in second, and Morgan Stanley bid three, eight times to, uh, to come in third, and they were all within point zero two percent. Two seventy-eight, two seventy-nine, and two eighty. So I think it went very well. You retained your triple-A, highest rating you can get. They were very complimentary. That's in part of our, the report is part of our report there as well, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think you covered it. I think we're good. Alderman York, do you have a question, or?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to follow up, as I, as I usually do, on these, on these bond issues. Towards the end of the, um, of the, uh, report that, um, Mr. McKenna addressed is the Standard and Poor's summary of Elmhurst, and it talks about our credit rating, which as he mentioned, and we all know is triple-A, obviously saved us some money there, and we're, we come into the marketplace very strong. This report doesn't really differ that much from the report that was issued in two thousand and fifteen. It does in one area, and I wanted to just bring that up and encourage everybody to look at the entire report. It's only five pages, it doesn't take that long to do it, even if you're not an accounting geek, it's still kinda cool to look at. The one thing that did change, and is worth noting, it, it has not affected our, our bond rating, and Standard and Poor's does not expect it to affect our bond rating, at least for the foreseeable two years, is we went from, uh, we went down a little bit in our rating of very weak debt and contingent liability profile. Obviously, when you issue twenty-five million dollars in bonds, your debt ratio is gonna go up a little bit. So that, that's what is outlined here, and just like every other, certainly municipality and actually every almost form of government in the state of Illinois, we're called out a little bit on our pension, unfunded pension liabilities. While we do a great job, and you'll see that we actually made contributions in excess of a hundred percent, we are still in a very planned process of catching up with our unfunded pension liabilities. We're on the right track, it's just taken a little while to get there, and we are kind of sidetracked periodically, as the, the city council will recall, by revisions to mortality tables and, and investment returns and all these types of things that are somewhat out of our control, but I would have to say that the City of Elmhurst, this committee and the city council, the, the Finance Department, is very, very non-negotiable in the fact that we fund our pension liabilities as fully and as quickly as we can to get them into the proper shape they should be. So we, we issued twenty-five million dollars in, in debt today, but if anybody was paying attention on the AP roster, there was, we actually made some debt payments today, too. About one point two million or, or so in principal. So obviously, the ebb was greater than the flow, or vice versa, however you wanna look at that, but we are continually reducing our debt, but when you set twenty-five million dollars out there on the table, it definitely changes the balance of the equation. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Can I ask Clerk Spencer, please, call the, what?
Just one quick.
Who, what? Dunn, Alderman Dunn, sorry.
I don't know if Chairman York mentioned that these bonds will be issued, um, in, where we look, January?
They're, they're issued today.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll, or call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Plumsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Anquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Ordinance providing for the issuance of twenty-five million dollars in bonds is approved. Before we move on, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Certainly, I wanna thank, uh, committee and staff for their hard work on this. This is one, when you issue bonds of this size and you have a triple-A rating, one small tick can literally be a half million dollars. So it's a, all of the hard work that's put into making Elmhurst a triple-A rated community really pays off in these types of situations. The other thing I wanna say is, and Alderman, former Mayor Levin can attest to this, pretty much, this is what we've been doing for three years since I've been elected, is we've been working on stormwater. And at some point, uh, there's a lot of planning, but at some point, you have to pay for it. And this is gonna, we've got six projects happening as we speak, maybe another, another two or three on the drawing board that should be kicked off in the next year and a half or so. So I'm happy with the amount of work that we've done and what we've achieved, but at some point, we have to pay for it, and you'll see a lot of, um, Alderman get very passionate about our negotiations with our other governmental bodies. This is real money we're talking about. So when we're asking for cooperation from our other governmental bodies, it's not just a half million dollars here, a half million dollars there. We feel it's the Elmhurst taxpayers' money, and the Elmhurst taxpayer is gonna pay for it one way or the other, whether it comes out of this pocket or that pocket. But this is gonna pay for, um, the stormwater projects that we have going on as we speak. The other thing I'll say, and it was something that the committee, um, Finance Committee moved forward with, I don't know, maybe six months ago, maybe a little less, and I don't want it to get lost on this, is that there was a quarter penny tax that was expiring, a DuPage County tax, quarter of a penny. So for every dollar you spent, one quarter of a penny was taken by DuPage County. Committee recommended and council approved to maintain that tax, so that, Alderman York mentioned it, it's expiring for a month, but it's going back on. So, um, you know, a, a quarter of a penny. So for every four dollars you spend, one penny is gonna go to fund this. It doesn't sound like a lot, but schedules provided by the Finance Committee that showed that the amount of taxes that we're gonna, um, that we're going to, that are gonna be generated, that we're gonna collect on that quarter penny are pretty much gonna pay for our schedule of projects over the next ten or fifteen years. I, I know that, and I wanna make sure it's clear that that's a sales tax. And why is that important? Well, in my opinion, the good news with a sales tax is I don't think anyone's gonna not stop in Elmhurst for a quarter of a penny. But a lot of people do stop in Elmhurst, and they're gonna pay that quarter of a penny. Somewhere between forty and fifty percent of the people who are paying that quarter of a penny don't live in Elmhurst. So think of it that way. We figured out a way to have forty to fifty percent of our stormwater projects paid by generous people coming into Elmhurst and buying stuff. I think it's very important to understand, um, I know that tax bills went out recently, and assessments went out recently, we've lowered, uh, property taxes the last two years. So when the question's asked, "How are we gonna pay for it?", a lot of hard work's been done by committee and council to, uh, to show those steps to the residents, how that's gonna be paid for. It's not a small amount, but I think it shows the residents of Elmhurst that we are serious about stormwater mitigation and our stormwater projects. So this is just another step in the process, and I wanna thank all those involved. Uh, on to Agenda Item nine point two. Clerk Spencer, I ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance to accept, approve, and authorize the execution of a certain permanent stormwater easement and a access license agreement with the county of DuPage relative to construction of the Walnut, Myrtle, Evergreen areas stormwater management project. of the Walnut, Myrtle, Evergreen areas stormwater management project.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Kennedy. Anyone from your committee wanna handle this? Alderman Kennedy.
This is just an ordinance to put in place the easement for, with DuPage County to do the project for the quarry.
Allows us to run our pipes on their land and dump our water in their, in their quarry. Okay. Comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. Onto 9.3. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number sixteen Virginia Lane Town Homes in the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois, providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, this is a result of a report out of your committee. Any comments?
No, Your Honor. I think we pretty fully covered it at the last meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments as it relates to this motion? Clerk Spencer, please call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Item 9.3 is approved. Onto 9.4. To put this before council, I'll ask Clerk Spencer, oh, Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to.
An ordinance.
Read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid and accepting the proposal of Ludwig Explosives, Inc., for drilling and blasting services at the Elmhurst Quarry in connection with the Walnut, Myrtle, Evergreen Stormwater Improvements Project and authorizing the execution of a contract between Ludwig Explosives, Inc., and the city of Elmhurst.
Put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance and the one immediately following are in conjunction with one another. This one for Ludwig Explosives is, again, for part of the quarry project, very specific skillset they bring and experience level in dealing with blasting away rock in quarries. They've done that in multiple quarries here in the state of Illinois. And their efforts, along with High-Tech Rockfall, will allow for the installation of the pipe into the quarry and to do everything it's gonna do to drain water from the tree streets area.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman, Graham.
Yeah, and maybe this should've been stated on the previous. I don't know if we talked about it as publicly at council meeting when it was under reports, but one thing to note is that the distance that the stormwater pipe getting into the quarry goes west actually has been shortened. We're able to enter in the quarry as far east as all possible, so saving a few dollars for the city of Elmhurst residents. We had to make some adjustments in regards to the outfall into the quarry, which is what this is about, but it definitely saves some distance and therefore some dollars for residents of getting that pipe and getting that water into the quarry.
Okay. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.4 is approved. Onto Agenda Item 9.5. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving bid and accepting the proposal of High-Tech Rockfall Construction, Inc., for hand scaling, installing rock dowels, and maintenance services at the Elmhurst Quarry in connection with the Walnut, Myrtle, Evergreen Stormwater Improvement Projects and authorizing the execution of a contract between High-Tech Rockfall Construction, Inc., and the city of Elmhurst.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
I think I covered this already, Mr. Mayor, so no further comments.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Dunn.
Just a quick question. In one of the reports, there was some discussion on how the county was trying to partner with us while we're doing this work. They wanted some work done. Is that in this particular effort in terms of construction going on in the quarry?
Yeah, they, they wanna piggyback onto this effort, and they're gonna pay us the difference of what their portion of the project is out of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.5 is approved. Onto resolutions. Clerk Spencer, Agenda item 10.1, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an application for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant for the North York and I-290 interchange enhancement project.
To put this, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a formalization of a requirement the state of Illinois has for when you're going for grant dollars, that the governing body that, from which it comes from, says, yes, they wanna do it. So just formalizing that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino. Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Agenda item 10.1 is approved. Motion carries. 10.2. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the Schiller-Palmer Parking Structure Maintenance Repairs.
Put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a previous report that we looked at under the consent agenda. This item, along with a number of others, we suspended the rules to do the report and the ordinance, or in this case, the resolution, in the same night. Back in May, there was one committee meeting that we did not have because we lacked a quorum. And so to keep this activity and others like it on track is the reason we had to go this route tonight. So it's certainly not our normal course of affairs to do that, but sometimes when our own personal lives and careers interject with what goes on with city business, we need to take action to keep things on track. So that's it.
Okay. Any comments or questions as it relates to this motion? Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 10.2 is approved. Agenda item 10.3. Clerk Spencer, please read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of Change Order Number Two for the 2015 South. Water Spheroid Exterior Repainting and Lettering Project. Thank you.
AKA Water Tower.
That's it.
To put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Why don't you fill us in on the Water Spheroid? Alderman Kennedy.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. During the processes of this project, when they drained the water out of the Spheroid, they identified a number of issues that could not have been seen during the initial look at what the scope of work was gonna be. So that was one portion of the change order. The second was to include the installation of a pipe through the center of the Spheroid so that if there were any utilities wherever to be required on the top of the Spheroid or the top of the water tower, that they wouldn't be done in such a way where you had to put a pipe or wires around the outside. So this would be more aesthetically pleasing than would be the alternative.
Got it. Any comments or questions? Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 10.3 is approved. Onto Agenda item 10.4. Clerk Spencer, please read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for architectural design and Phase One engineering services by and between CDM Smith, Inc., and the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, for the Elmhurst Metra Station.
Put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Palmsky, second by Alderman Leader. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. So to proceed with engineering and design and to have a proposal in, along the lines of CMAC grant application requirements, we have to follow a pretty aggressive schedule. So CDM Smith would be following some of the same steps as we saw in the downtown plan update or other plans. A kickoff meeting, data collection, public data gathering workshops, time to actually do the architectural design, other information gathering that's required for the grant application. So for us to have this completed by the end of December for the January grant application date, we have to start as soon as possible. So I'd like to ask that we vote on this this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Clerk Spencer.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Ely, absent. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three, eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 10.4 is approved. Real quick on this. This is just the beginning. I had an opportunity to meet with Metra and Congressman Quigley about six months ago. And ultimately, if we're ever to get in line for any dollars, a big transportation bill was passed a couple of months ago. If we're ever to get in line for any dollars from the federal government, the first thing they say is, where's your plan? And when we sat down with Congressman Quigley and the head of Metra, the first thing they said is, where's your plan? So ultimately, due to all of the safety regulations, among other things, remodeling and redoing the train station, which, we have a train station that works, but for many people, it's actually a gateway into Elmhurst, and it's the first thing they see. I'm not sure there's been many changes to that train station since I was a kid. But there are a lot of regulations and safety involved, so it's very expensive to remodel. So ultimately, when we do remodel, we will be looking for federal dollars. This is a first step. Agenda item 10.5. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for the 2016 Water Main Improvements Project.
Put this before council, I'll ask for approval of the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is one where we did the report and resolution in the same night, and this is our standard water main improvement efforts that we do every year, and this is just what we're doing here for 2016.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Leader.[1552.01] Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy, absent.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sapatino.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda Item 10.5 is approved. Onto Agenda Item 11, other business, any other business this evening. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We adjourn.